Well, I cautiously optimistic that the bats have not awakened.
They haven't awakened.
I mean, I guess we would talk TV thing of like a bomb up, but it's written on the tape or something. So they're going to be working on my taxes and the way you were to the back. The A's were playing since then. I think he thinks more like the play. I'm just curious to see Mike Trump.
Oh, yeah, that's my grandson's career player all the time. Yeah.
Welcome, everyone, to our March 19th, 2024 meeting, council meeting. We were in executive session beforehand. We were talking about, well, I'll let the solicitor tell you.
Thank you. We discussed, all council members were present. We discussed personnel, labor matters, police matters, litigation matters, including those involving Chief McClay. Thank you.
Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a ready and justice for all.
Is Virginia on? So just an announcement, Mr. Vitarelli was here for executive session, but he's on vacation. Therefore, he will not be here for the regular council meeting.
Hello, Virginia. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you do roll call?
Yes. Mayor Gary Wallace?
Present.
Congressman Frank Angellard?
Present.
Helen Holm?
Present.
Melissa Johnson?
Here.
Marie Kelsa?
Here.
Andrew Lubin?
Here.
Luke McKee?
Present.
Scott Robinson?
Here.
And John Vitarelli?
Sean is on vacation. He's absent. Virginia, could you please note that he was on via Zoom for the executive session?
Yes, yes, I will.
Thank you.
Our borough solicitor?
I'm here.
Is that Randy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
So some changes to the agenda that we've made. We're going to have two sets of public comment. The first one is for items that are on the agenda. And then later in the day will be, or in the meeting will be a public comment for all other non-agenda items. So does anyone have any public comment on agenda items? Peggy Walsh, three minutes.
Good evening. Is it on? On, can you hear me? Okay. My name's Peggy Walsh, and I've lived on Stockham Avenue with my family for over 40 years. I'd like to comment on item 9C of your agenda, to approve hiring a consulting firm to search for a new police chief. As a taxpayer who has seen my taxes rise deeply each year, I'm appalled at the amount of taxpayer dollars that have been wasted in litigation over the firing of our former police chief. Laying aside the fact that I disagree that Chief McClay did anything so egregious as to earn a dismissal, the total disregard of the money implication is shocking. I know that new members, one current member and the new mayor, had nothing to do with this counterproductive and divisive campaign, abuse of taxpayer trust, and waste of taxpayer dollars in a financially strapped borough. I've done my best to look at public records to add up the total cost on litigation and investigations since February of 2023 to January of 2024. And I come up with a total of a bit over $130,000. This does not count the $120 per hour salary we're paying the interim chief. Now you will need to spend money to search for another police chief by hiring a consulting firm. And we have no idea how much the settlement will be to the former chief because of his wrongful termination. I'm a former English teacher, not a math person. Still, I stand corrected if my calculations are off. But even giving or taking a few thousand dollars, in the end, you will have spent over $200,000 on this fiasco. And I think that's a generous estimate. And that's not counting the settlement we'll have to pay Chief McClay because he was wrongfully terminated. What could we have done with that money? Put in walking paths and some benches in Patriots Park, finally? Find a summer program for the library? Upgrade the infrastructure at William Park? Apply for matching grants? I know that there is 20, 50,000 in the budget for matching grants. Who is writing them? You could also investigate creating a municipal parking lot behind the Stockham building to serve our downtown area, which would create quite a bit of revenue and take care of a tremendous amount of traffic. Once again, I know that new members and at least one current council person have to clean up the mess created by current and past members. But please move forward as quickly as possible to resolve the situation. New members, please learn a lesson from this PR financial disaster.
Three minutes. Thank you for your comments. That's three minutes.
You begin to take positive steps to make the borough a better place. As always, I ask, please bring civility to your interactions. You've not been elected to embark on an ego test. You've been elected to serve the taxpayer.
That's three minutes. I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments.
It's not an easy job, but it's a rewarding one.
Can we just move on? We're going to have some community announcements. I'm sorry, three minutes. Three minutes.
And I'm going to distribute the.
Okay, we're going to move on. We have some community announcements and presentations. Well, no presentations, but right on Bridge Street, 78 East Bridge Street, there was a new company that's opening up. It's called Debbie's Crafts, and they're making specialty items, t-shirts, et cetera. So if you have a business, please consider them. There's also a Twilight Kombucha, which is on 101 Washington Street. And do you know anything about them, Judith?
What I know is it's supposed to be a healthy drink for your, to clean your gut system. So I think we should all go and try it out.
Oh, fantastic. So those are the two new businesses coming to town, which is good news for the borough. Now we have some board appointments to be made. We have a one, three-year appointment for the library board, which expires on 3/1/27. And we have a letter of interest from Teresa Rissman. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Teresa Rissman for the library board.
Second.
You don't need a second.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we have a nomination from Teresa Rissman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven to zero. For the zoning board, there's a one-year, three-year appointment as an alternate, which expires on 1/4/27. It's a letter of interest from Michelle McGowan. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Michelle McGowan.
Michelle McGowan has been nominated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Michelle McGowan passes seven to zero. There's a letter of interest for the MMA board, remainder of a five-year appointment, which expires on 1/4/27. The letter of interest is from Daniel Murphy. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Daniel Murphy.
Nomination for Daniel Murphy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven to zero. There's a library board open appointment, one three-year appointment, which expires on 3/1/27. We got a late letter from a Ben Strauss. He also was, wanted to be the mayor. So any nominations for Ben Strauss?
I'll nominate Ben Strauss.
Ben Strauss has been nominated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Ben Strauss, and everyone else who was appointed this evening. We have the Borough Manager Report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. Excuse me. I had attended a Zoom meeting with Senator Sanisario's office. It's something that they're researching right now. It's called the Blue Zones. What it is, is it's creating a healthy atmosphere for children and also adults with eating, good eating habits, exercising, working in the park areas with children and so forth. So it's something that you'll hear about in the future. It was well-attended by most municipal managers. And Sanisario, Senator Sanisario's office will be looking into grant funding for all the communities, if possible. So it's something new, new and exciting. Excuse me. I apologize. Currently, we're also working with the Public Works Department and our engineer, looking into stormwater grants and some paving of the roads. We'll be coming up with roadway systems preliminary list to look at with council, so we can move forward with doing some roadway systems in the very near future. We're also, I apologize. We're also looking at several new ordinances, handicap parking ordinance. We're looking at a noise, possible noise ordinance. We're also looking at different types of things that could be helpful when we have nuisance areas. So we're doing something of that nature. We're also, we were just also awarded an FMT grant for the backflow valve project at the levee. We're not sure the amount of that grant at this time. It started around 25,000, and we've asked for some more funds, so we may be, we may be near the $100,000 amount at this time. The other very, very exciting news that I have to report this evening is I've been able to acquire, excuse me, I've been able to secure an $80,000 donation for a vehicle purchase for our truck traffic enforcement officer. We'll be making more announcements shortly on that. I'm also working with Council President Helen Holm regarding another donation for the scale that we have, since we're having issues with that scale. So we're working diligently together on that also. That's my report. If anyone has any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Any questions? No. Police Chief report? Chief Simpson?
I'll be brief. First, we start off by apologizing for not having the activities. Must continue your, and we dropped a little sooner, but we'll work to fix that in April. Certainly was a busy week last week with the news we want to move on to now. So thank you to the Civil Service Commission. We have completed our end of the pre-employment check, and we anticipate every one of the candidates to start this coming Monday, March 25th, with all the other parts of the process being completed successfully. Start that out with a meeting with all the candidates to assess their knowledge, skills, and abilities to see where we can fast-track to get these officers appropriately in the positions of police in the community in the most efficient manner. So that'll start this coming Monday. Moving on, another thing that's happening on this Monday is actually a shared agreement with the Co-Respondent Program with Lower Make and Yardley. I sent out a policy draft, I believe, to Judith that was forwarded on to Chris Kerber for his review. It's a model policy draft of this program that's already operating in Bucks County. So that person will start in our three communities next week, mostly through their orientation program in Lower Make, but eventually will make their way over here to Morrisville Borough to effectively, you know, meet our organization, understand what their role will play in the borough of Morrisville, and hopefully help us mitigate some of the emotional mental health issues that we have that could use those kinds of services. Outside of that, I don't have any other dates for council. Looking forward to April.
I have a question for you. What? What? I know that there was a busy weekend with the police officers and the various departments. There's been some chatter on Facebook, which I don't really like to acknowledge. However, our police department did help the other police departments, especially on Saturday.
Yeah, you're actually the third person to bring that to my attention today. And I don't, I don't operate in the world of social media chatter, except for when somebody brings them to my attention. But yeah, we did, certainly did. In fact, I was communicating with John Espramonte, who was working that day, asking them a status update throughout this terrible tragic event here in Bucks County. So yeah, we certainly did, and offered and rendered any assistance that would have been required of us, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to be aware. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, Chief. I don't want to disparage anyone, but let's, you know, let's be honest that our crime numbers may not have been entirely truthful up until the beginning of this year. How are we looking crime-wise in the borough? I mean, I know we can't compare the numbers because they're apples and oranges.
Let me just answer it in this general term. First of all, we're trying to be as proactive as possible on the social media platforms that we do operate, okay? And crime watch. And there are some other things that we need to start to leverage with that platform. I know the mayor and I have talked about it. We've talked about it with in-house staff here. It'd be a little bit more, again, proactive and make sure that we're getting the proper use out of that platform that we pay for, and then obviously communicate to the public. It's a great feature to have. This is a very busy community. And as you all know, and for those in the audience that don't know, I've done work across the Commonwealth and was a police chief for 12 years. And I can say, without even looking at numbers, I can feel the busyness and the vibe of this community. It's got some unique challenges, but I'm confident that the officers are capable to meet those challenges. And, you know, we're trying to understand what that reporting system should look like going forward. So we are, in fact, being accurate with what we're saying is happening.
Great, thank you.
I was anticipating a question from Ms. Wallace.
Oh. Scott, anything else?
I know, but he's, he's on the ball. He anticipated that. If you anticipate any crime in the borough, can you go stop it before it happens?
All right, on to consent agendas. We're going to vote on these as a group. It's approval of the minutes from the 2/20/24 council meeting and the 3/7/24 special meeting. Approval of the bill list from 2/1/24 to 2/29/24 in the amount of $422,101.68. Authorize the borough to participate in the Bucks County Health Department Annual West Nile Virus Program. Call for motion to approve payment in the amount of $14,418.55 to the Morrisville Fire Department as payment per the fire fund as of 12/31/23, based on final 2023 financials, third and final payment for 2023. Call for motion to authorize payment to QPI Electrical in the amount of $77,828.75 to be paid out of ARPA funds for emergency services at Borough Hall. Call for a motion to approve QPI Electrical Change Order Number One in the amount of $2,845 to be paid out of ARPA funds for emergency services at Borough Hall. Call for motion to approve QPI Electrical Change Order 2A in the amount of $14,560 to be paid out of ARPA funds for emergency services at Borough Hall. Call for motion to approve QPI Electrical Change Order Number Three in the amount of, it's a negative number of $5,922 to be credited back to ARPA funds for emergency services at Borough Hall. Andrew Lubin, would you make the motion? Luke, would you second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I was just like a clarification on 8C. What exactly will be happening there with that? Like, is someone coming in?
This is a county health department program. And what they do is they go into the certain areas and they do spraying.
Okay, they're spraying. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's an annual thing that they do every year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Judith, can you just explain for the public items D, E, F, G, and H? Is all work completed now for the borough? And what exactly was done?
Yes. At this time, they have done as much work as the contract had called for. During that work, we found that there was some extra work that was required. And John Later, our Public Work Superintendent, could touch upon any of that also. There's some work that needed to be done that was sought after the fact. And those are some of the items that we were needed in addition. And we also saw that were some things that we really didn't have to do after all, like a wall system and so forth. So that was the credit back. So we're happy to report that, once all of these items are approved, we'll be taking care of the change orders. That work must be completed yet. And at that time, we'll be coming back to the borough again then with final completion information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Action item, motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Committee application for music and food on Saturday, 7/13, 2:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Williamson Park. Catherine, will you make the motion? Melissa, would you second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I have some questions. So there was an application in our delivery about this, but there was no other schedule put together regarding either this or motion 9B for the Celebrate Irish. So do we know, is the borough responsible for any other dollars?
If it's a sponsored event, then the other expenses will be coming out of our budget for it. As for the band for the Food and Truck Festival, we do have a sponsor for that. So the other expenses, like stage rental, the lights, it's all depending on if it's sponsored by the borough.
Judith, that's not how that works, right? If it's a sponsored event, it doesn't mean that the boroughs pays for things, does it?
If it's sponsored by the borough, then the borough would pay for those items out of the borough budget. And I believe that's what, I believe that's what the request is.
And then any other occurring expenses, like, you know, like if we have a balloon net or something, would come out of our budget for the Parks and Recreation special events.
So what are those expenses?
Well, for the, for the Food and Trucks event, there really isn't any other expenses that we really occurred. The Irish Festival, we did occur. That's probably one of our more expensive ones because we paid for the band. I do have a, almost a complete budget I can get to you. So it's, you know, but we stayed way within our budget. It was less than $1,000 that we incurred.
Judith, could you just explain? I was under the impression, just because there's money in the budget, doesn't mean that it's free-for-all to spend?
So how the budget works is, we have X amount of dollars in the budget under Parks and Recreation. So if anyone wants to spend the monies that are in that line item, they would request the amount to spend, and then council would approve that. And as long as we have the money in the budget, and council would approve, that's how that would work. So I know that we talked about this before, that what we were going to do with, with some of these projects that are coming up with the events, having a list of items that maybe if you want a bouncy house or a band and so forth, and then putting some dollar amounts there so council can physically see that when they're voting on this and making a motion, just as you just said, it may be $1,000. So that way, council knows how much we're really spending. Not that it's an open cap item, you know, without a cap. So if council were to approve these items, how much is really being spent on each one? That's really what I think everybody's looking for.
Okay, that's, that's the first I've heard that we haven't done that in the past. So do you want to put a cap on the Irish Festival?
Does council want to put a cap?
I think I'd like to see a budget.
I'd like to see a budget. Catherine, can you get a budget?
I can send it out to you tomorrow. But we need to vote on this so we can let them, because it's very hard to get bands and vendors and stuff.
I'd like to see a price. I'd like to see an ID. We're spending $3, $50, $500, whatever.
We're going to spend $1,000 on this event. That's what we did last year. You can do whatever you'd like to, Andrew.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so for the music and food, it would be no more dollars? And for the Irish Fest capped at $1,000?
Is that enough?
We have to make a motion to amend?
Well, I would say, let's, let's put $100 on the Food and Truck Festival because we might need streamers and stuff like that for that. But that means you're covering the insurance and the stage and all of that.
It's the additional expenses.
Yeah. And then the Irish Festival, will you?
You can talk into your mic.
I'm sorry, I apologize. We can cap it at $1,000?
And that's enough?
If I could clarify, just trying to understand, this is 9A, right now would be a $100 cap, and 9B would be a $1,000 cap?
Yeah. If I, if, if it comes to more, then I'll come back to the borough and we can revisit that. Is that fine with you? Okay, thank you.
We're going to amend the motion. 9A, motion to approve the Parks and Rec Committee application for music and food on Saturday, 7/13, 2:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Williamson Park, with a cap of a cost to the borough of $100. Do I need a motion?
You had a motion and a second.
Okay, so can we vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Motion to approve Parks and Recreation Committee application for Celebrate Irish on Sunday, September 15th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. 10:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Williamson Park with a cap of $1,000 expense to the residents. Could I have a motion? I'm sorry. Andrew, would you make the motion? Luke, would you second that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Old habits die hard. Any discussion? That was it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Motion to approve a hiring and consultant company as spirant for the search and selection of the Morrisville Borough Police Chief. Scott, would you please make a motion? Melissa, would you second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Motion to extend the independent contractor agreement with Police Chief Gerald Simpson as the interim police chief per the 3/19/2024 contract. Luke, would you make the motion?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's per the 3/19/24 contract expiring on 5/21/24.
Extending the contract to 5/21/24.
Luke, would you make the motion?
So moved.
Marie, second? We have a first and a second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Call for motion to consider and prove the Civil Service Commission conducting its own testing in order to develop and certify the eligibility list expeditiously. Scott, would you make the motion?
Okay, that's, okay, that was period after expeditiously, right?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Melissa, would you make a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? So just for the public, we were debating whether to, in December, when we were hiring officers, we had civil service do their own testing rather than go with the consortium list. So we debated what we should do, and we're going to hold off on using the consortium list and allow civil service to do the testing once again. Ready, Barb? You are now, right? Wasn't expecting that, were you?
To start immediately.
Yeah, to start immediately. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Good luck, Barb. She's in shock. Okay, now we're going to go on to public comment for any items that the public would like to discuss that is not on the agenda. Three minute. Anybody have anything to say? Kathy?
Oops. Kathy Pansy to Hillcrest Avenue. Yeah, it's different. It's unique. And I love the words on your first couple of action items. ARPA, near and dear to my heart. So a couple of questions. Do you have a balance of how much more ARPA you could spend? Just a question for the general public. They did question where the ARPA money was spent, and it was on there. And I noticed, and I guess the viewing audience notices it too, when certain events come up, there's a lot more critiquing and questions. So I hope it stays consistent on everybody else's projects for whatever they have. People in the community know in your budget, you had events and lines, and it's not specific to the taxpayer's money. You get money from other sources, too, within the realms of your budget. So if putting tag words like "the residents are paying $1,000", well, there's a bunch of residents. We like to use our parks. We like to hear money. Anybody that did an event knows usually your bands are hired and signed up way before March for a summer event. So nobody's playing. That's just make sure they're consistent on anything that the borough sponsors because the public will be watching. Thank you.
I'm going to keep my own time because I think you cut me short because I had checked that and it was nowhere near three minutes. But I will accept it. I'd like to second what Kathy Pansy said. It's so funny that everything on this council sailed through tonight except when we came to trying to give some money to have events in our park. We are so willing to spend money, to waste taxpayer money on interim police chiefs, on legal bills. Like, the lawyers must love us because I think we're supporting them. But boy, when it comes to having two festivals in our park, which most boroughs that have any insight as to what creates a borough, a family-friendly borough that people want to move into, want to have in their parks, this is where we have constant questioning and criticism. And you're going to cap it at $100? You can't even come up with more than $100 when I think there's $10,000 in the budget for the parks? And this is the one thing tonight that you have balked at? And that's what I'm trying to get across. Your priorities are off. The other thing you won't finance is a summer program for children for the library. $3,000. You wouldn't come up with $3,000 last year to provide that summer program for young children. Do you expect people to move into a borough that doesn't value its library, doesn't value its park, doesn't value its children's programs? I've got four new toddlers on my block alone in Stockham Avenue. I hope they stay. But we need some enlightened leadership that cares more about the people and the children of this district and what families want and need than spending money on lawyers, interim police chiefs, and going out and firing perfectly good police chiefs and spending tons of money on hiring a consulting firm. No balking at that.
Can I remind the public that non-agenda items are non-agenda items?
Another thing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's impossible to know what you can comment to. And that's because you don't, you're cutting down free speech. You don't want anybody to question what's going on here. So, you know, clarify what kind of comments we can make and when we can make them because this is the stupidest thing I've ever seen in my life.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
What other borough does this? Where did you come up with this idea?
If you look at other boroughs, other boroughs are doing this. Yes, you should. Okay, Judith, would you like to discuss the ARPA funds?
Yes, thank you. So everyone understands, since the inception of the ARPA funds, we have had everything that we have spent any monies on from the ARPA funds on the council agendas. We put a new roof on the borough building with the ARPA funds. That was on the agenda. It was voted on. It was in the budget also. We just worked on a brand-new electrical system for the borough building. That was on the agenda. We put in new sewer lines at the borough building. That was on the agenda, also approved. We put a new gas boy system in for the police department, for the fire company, for the ambulance system, for the public works department with ARPA funds. That was on the agenda and also in the budget. We put in a new HVAC system in the ambulance building. That was on the budget and also in the, on the agenda. I'm trying to think if there was anything else because I'm doing this off the top of my head, so I apologize. But every single amount of monies that we have spent regarding the ARPA funds have been on the agendas. They've been voted on, and we've clearly discussed this for at least over a year as to where these funds are going and where they've been spent and what we plan to do in the future. So please understand that if you follow the agendas, my managers' reports, the budget, it's even on the budget what we're doing. So if there's any questions whatsoever about ARPA funds, please don't hesitate to ask because it's been clearly posted. It's been in writing. It's been provided to the public. It's been provided to council. It's been provided on all areas, not just at the meeting, but also on the budget paperwork. The other area that was mentioned was the library, the summer program. I had worked with the library employees, and they had gotten donations last year, well over $3,000 for that summer program. And the summer program was phenomenal. This year, they've also been working on donations, and we also added monies to the library budget for the summer program. So that has happened. The monies have been added, and there's been donations that have been gotten. And we'll also have another wonderful summer program. The library, we also hired. I interviewed, along with Diane, I interviewed and hired a new summer program employee. She has been doing a phenomenal job at the library, not just with the summer program, but with lots of new and different things. She had a Barbie Day. We've been posting a lot of that information. The library's been posting that information. So we, the borough has been working with the library systems with all of these items that are needed. I will leave the rest of that regarding Parks and Recreation to council because that's not within my realm. But those items having to do with ARPA and the library, we've been funding those. So I just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
Thanks, Judith.
You're welcome.
For council discussion items, Mayor Wallace had found and forwarded a T-Mobile community grant, and I wanted to discuss this with council because if you all have this in your packets, if you had an opportunity to read it. T-Mobile is giving up to $50,000 to your community to help improve your areas. So some of the things that they've done is they've transformed a vacant downtown lot into a splash pad. They've given $50,000 toward updating performing art stages. They've commissioned murals by a renowned artist. They did a roof repair on a community house. These are all different towns. So I won't go and I'll read, won't read through them. But thank you, Mayor Wallace, for doing this. But I wanted to see, is there something that this council thought that we could use this grant for?
Could we? I have a quick question before we go into that. Did you say that was in this packet? Or is that in the drop?
It was in the drop.
In the drop, okay. After you said in the packet, I'm like, I don't have that here. No, no, it's fine. Yeah, no, I just wanted to make, I'm like, because I had some things that were missing, so. Yes, I do think there's plenty that we could use that for.
Madam President?
Yes.
That's, I think, is that the same as the home grant?
It's the hometown grant.
Yeah, the hometown grant. Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities. It just depends on what you want to focus in on. If you want to focus on, you know, revitalizing our downtown or, you know, doing trails in our park. It just depends. I think it's a great idea. So we might want to storm.
Yeah, that's, I guess, this council, I guess, if they had ideas, or Mayor Wallace, if you had some ideas, or should we give this to the planning commission to take a look at?
We have enough time.
Madam President, may I ask a question?
Oh, the mayor's talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll get to you in a minute.
No, thank you for bringing it up and putting on the agenda tonight. So yeah, it is a 50,000 or, you know, 50K that T-Mobile is giving out. And I think the best way to utilize it, and I've been talking to a couple of residents and a lot of people about it, I think that downtown would need a true revitalize. And I think that's where it would be best utilized. We want to bring people to Morrisville. Downtown can connect us to our wonderful parks, the Trowes, the Levy, the Canal. So I think if we can bring people into downtown more, make it more beautiful, and change some things with sidewalks and more inviting, I think that'd be great.
Madam President.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Actually, that's what I was going to ask. I didn't realize he had said something, and I was going to say, can we ask Mayor Wallace where his ideas lie since he brought it here? But given, a few weeks ago, we had a presentation from someone who had a bike lane, bike lane idea. I'm just curious, could this be combined with that? Could we? I don't know where that lied, but.
I think those are two separate things because the bike lane, I think, is going to happen right out here on Washington Street, going from Union down to Bridge. With, I think there's going to be, where you can tie up your bike over here in the parking lot. And I think that's happening in April.
Well, there'll be another proposal to council.
Oh, another proposal.
Great. And that would be a free charge.
Yeah. It's paid for by grant.
And I know that's temporary. I was just wondering if maybe there could be a tie-in in the sense of, granted, this, this money would not take place anytime soon, but it could be a great segue.
Yeah, depending on what we want to do.
What we end up doing.
Yeah. So how does this council want to handle this? Do you want Mayor Wallace to work with the planning commission? Or?
I just, Madam President, if it's okay by speech, I think that when you're writing grants, it would be nice if we have something to look at grants, it would be nice if we have something to look at because we have to come up with all these details and stuff. If I remember right, and I could be wrong, and you probably have more history than I do, but to me, we had a plan to revitalize this town several years ago, so we might look at, see if we can find that, if that's the option we want to go, so we can take that information to help us write this grant. It will be more efficient than trying to build something from scratch. So that's just my suggestion.
Do we have a plan?
I don't know. I mean, we've had so many plans over the years, so I don't really remember.
I have not seen a plan, but if there is a plan, I'd like to see that plan. I think it would be great for us to share that with all of council if anybody has that plan.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find and see what I can come up with and give it to you if that's the focus that you want to go.
Thank you, Catherine. Yeah, I think that would be great. It would be a starting point and then build off of that after something already done.
All right. So I'll contact the planning commission to see what they have, or maybe, Melissa, you can contact the planning commission? Okay, so that way you could start talking to them, see what we can do, what their plans are for downtown.
Madam President, I've got a question for the mayor. Are we able to use any of these funds for matching grant purposes? We could take the 50 and parlay it into more? Seriously?
I can get back to you on that one. I didn't read all the fine print, but what it could be used for, but.
Okay. The next, the next topic is the alcohol policy for special events outside of Williamson Park. So I know that there's going to be some events coming up on Bridge Street where we're going to be closing Bridge Street down, and we do have two establishments in town that serve alcohol. So, this isn't really a policy that we need to do, and I guess, Randy, maybe you can help us. How would, like, the mayor is running an event that he wants to do. How would he do that? I know the liquor control board has to be contacted.
You can get special permits, like, you can get vendors of alcohol and get special, like, one day, they can get special event permits for that. So, that's what, it can be done, but they have to get, have to clear it with and get that permit, that special permit, which can be done.
From the LCB, correct?
Yeah, with the LCB from, with council approval, sure. Absolutely.
So would council be doing, or the borough manager be applying, or would the businesses be applying?
Well, well, we'd have to get, okay, that's a good question. We'd have to get permission, and then they can apply.
Okay.
We don't have control over alcohol.
Well, sticking with the Bridge Street event, for example, we've got Ashlyn who's got a valid permit who'll be selling alcohol, I would assume, in their facility. They don't need a permit for that, do they? Okay.
This is for on the street.
No, to sell alcohol in their own facility, of course not.
I just want to make sure the.
Yes, no, we're good.
Clarify. Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify also that the ordinance that we had worked on last year is for the park system. It has nothing to do with the Bridge Street area. So that's why we're talking about this. If people have questions, that's why we're not utilizing that process. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Thank you.
So can, we can't make a motion on this right now, but can we generally agree to allow the mayor to go ahead with his plans to speak with the businesses? Randy?
Oh, you're asking me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought you were asking council.
No, not you.
Yes.
Okay, so, so we, so does anybody have any issues on council if Mayor Wallace continued researching this and getting this together? Okay, fantastic. Okay, so the final thing to discuss is council spending, and this is just a reminder just for new council members, that anytime you need to spend dollars or you want to take a class, or what else is there, Judith, that council would spend, any, on any expenditure, that person would have to bring it to council, and council needs to approve it before any expenditure is made.
Correct, and what we would do is, we would ask, we have, we have the information on the agenda itself, that if you have something, that our meetings are the third Tuesday of each month, council knows that, so your request to be considered for the agenda, the information should be submitted to the borough manager the Monday eight days prior to the meeting so that we can get that information on the borough council, and everyone can see it in the drop, and we can have that ahead of time. I think that would really help everyone have a better understanding, and I know last year we talked about Parks and Recreation with trying to make sure that we had a list of items and a budget ahead of time so council could vote on that. I think that would be really a good idea, so, to present that to council. So if there's a porta potty or a bouncy house or a band, if we have a list of items so council can see truly where the money is being spent, I think that it'll be more welcoming so everybody knows and has an understanding that, okay, you need $1,500, you need $2,000. The budget has $10,000 in it. That way, council will have a better understanding of where the money will be going, and the public also will have an understanding, or if you want to take a class, or if you want to do something different, you know, if the mayor wants to have an event himself, you know, or if any council persons want to try to have an event, you know, in their communities, you know, that type of thing, or at one of the parks near them. Making a submission with a plan, with the event application with a plan, with a mini budget, these are all wonderful ways to work together. It just puts everything out there and shows everyone the clarity of what's really going to take place.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on that? Okay, on to mayor's comments.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by sending my thoughts and prayers to the victims of the selfless act that was done on Saturday. We truly stand with them and so sorry for their loss. Thanks to Chief Simpson. I was in contact with him earlier that morning to understand where the Mooresville Police Department stood and what we needed to do, so he was right on top of it, so I truly appreciate that. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Council member comments? Anybody have anything?
I have two, two comments, you could call them. Number one is a bit of sad news. If everyone could keep the Kucheneal family in their prayers, Mr. Kucheneal Jerry, whose nickname is Bear, whose namesake is the garage over here on Bridge Street, passed away last week. He's a lifelong resident of Mooresville, graduated from Mooresville High, lived up on West Maple Avenue, and his wife, Pam, and his daughters, Amy and Kara, should keep them in your prayers. The other, this is a question, I guess, for Judith or maybe for Helen, that ribbon-cutting for the, down there on Bridge Street for the path, it was, it was a couple of different dates in April. Did we get a firm date on that or not?
Yes, and Scott, thank you very much for bringing that back up. Because I was having a hard time speaking during my report, I apologize. I had something in my throat and I just couldn't get the words out. I apologize. The very first thing that I really wanted to say that was that we do now have a tentative date of April 24th around 2:00 PM. I'm still waiting for the confirmation on that because the secretary from DCNR would like to attend and speak, so that's really what we've been waiting for. I sent around around four or five different dates. They proposed back April, they proposed another date back, and then that fell through, and now we're back on April 24th. So I will be letting everyone know as soon as I have a confirmed steady date, but so far, we're at April 24th around 2:00 PM. That's a tentative date for the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Bridge Street area. This is very exciting to have the secretary of the DCNR to be present, so I'm hoping that we can get as many residents, all of, as many council people that we can, the mayor, council president, all, everyone, anyone that's interested, Chief Simpson, any of the police officers, any of the audience members, anyone who's interested in attending. It's really a very special moment. That project had been on the books for a long, long time, started, and it was stagnant for a long time, and we resurrected it and finished it. I've been down the, down at the area. So many people are utilizing it. The lights that are out there at Bridge Street, they are solar and they're amazing. So, Scott, I'm sorry, I went a little too far, but it's a very exciting time. So April 24th, tentative date around 2:00 PM.
Not to get that excited, I just.
I know. A lot of hard work went into that project, so I'm excited.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to make an announcement. There are some community events. I just want to put a reminder out there. This Saturday, March 16th, the Riverfront Preserve Cleanup at 10:00 AM on March.
So, sorry, that was.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was last week. I'm sorry. March 30th, the Mooresville Rotary has an Easter egg hunt at 9:00 AM at Williamson Park. April 6th is the Little League Opening Day Parade. It starts at 10:00 AM. And also on April 6th, the Bucks County Community College will be collecting hazardous waste such as paint, batteries, propane, et cetera, and that's from 8:30 to 2:00 PM. For what? It's April 6th. It's at the Bucks County Community College. I think it's the main one.
If I may, all of these items are on the borough calendar. They're on the borough website. They're also on the Facebook page and the TV channel.
Okay, so on to, anybody else have any council member comments?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
Our thoughts and prayers go out to the gentleman's family who lost his life in the apartment of Five Run Plaza Boulevard.
Yeah, sad for his family. We should have done a moment of silence. Oh, we can?
Yep, absolutely.
So, based on all those comments, maybe we can stand for a moment of silence for the gentleman on Plaza Boulevard and the people over the weekend. Thank you, and also for Bear, Mr. Kucheneal. Okay, committee updates.
Madam President, I have something from a committee from the MEAC. I just want to thank everyone for coming out to the Riverfront Preserve Cleanup. It was a great success. Thanks to Spearhead Project Earth for coming out as well. They came to assist. It was a great event. There was a ton of people there. We took out a lot of trash. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Congrats to Nicole. Thank you for putting it together and having everything ready, set to go. Sorry, John, you had to clean that up.
Madam President, can I do a report on the past Parks and Recreation? Okay, we had a meeting on February 27th, and most was talked about some of our upcoming calendar events, the tree planting, the cleanup. And then we, at open discussion, Don Chronicle would like to see the clubhouse is be next, that's next to, I'm not too sure where it's located. I don't know what it's called. One of the clubhouse is, I apologize. I don't know exactly. Yeah, the baseball clubhouse. Thank you. I appreciate your support and help there. He would like to see if we could do a mural there. He's provided us with pictures of two Mooresville residents and athletes. Dick Hart played in the '55 Little League World Series, and Danny Napoleon played in the National Basketball, or Baseball League. And it was mentioned that Solid Rock, who did our other murals, would probably be interested in helping. So that's something that we're going to look at and bring a proposal to the council to see if we'd like to continue that thought process. So, that's, that was just about it. The meeting was adjourned at 8:35.
Thank you, Catherine.
Madam President?
Sure.
Could you take a second and tell us who's on what committee? There seems to be some confusion as to the status of committees and their membership for this year.
Catherine had made some recommendations. I don't know that the committees were fully funded. I'm going to sit down over this week and look at the committees and see what we need and what we don't need and maybe create some new ones.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll get an email this week sometime.
Thank you.
Nothing else? No? Okay, we're going to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, done.
Do you want a second or anything?
Fifty-five minutes. Fifty-five minutes.